Now, be getting.
The first item is approval of minutes. Do we have any changes on the minutes? Nobody? Okay. Do we have a motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved.
I second.
Oh, in favor. All right. And then we have some public participation. And again, this public participation is for items not identified for on the agenda. So we have two people. You can talk for an hour apiece if you'd like. So Ray Bridge.
I'll try and not take an hour. Good morning and good evening, trustees. I'm Raymond Bridge, 435 South 38th Street in Boulder, speaking on behalf of the 1,600 members of the Boulder County Audubon Society. Several aspects of the CU South section of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan documentation on the CU South property have serious potential impact on the open space and mountain parks riparian properties that we believe you should take notice of as trustees. These have not been previously discussed by the Open Space Board of Trustees, and we believe that you should consider them and provide advice to City Council. First, the map in the transportation study commissioned by planning staff from Fox Tuttle Hernandez on page 10 showing multimodal transportation improvements shows a connection labeled "Include Connections to South Boulder Creek Trail." Crossing east directly across wetlands purchased as open space for millions of dollars for important ecological reasons and included in the state natural area for which OSMP and the trustees are responsible. This same connection has subsequently been showed on CU's draft master plan released to the public. In other words, the connection is shown is proliferating in a set of documents that are in danger of being codified. The open space implications are serious. The route crosses important wetlands that include habitats for federally endangered species and county and state identified critical species and habitat. In addition, it seems contradictory to expect users to go from the off-leash, off-trail situation on the CU South property to the on-trail, no-dog South Boulder Creek Trail. The South Boulder Creek Trail is one of the few no-dog trails in the system designated after a long and contentious public process. The issues associated with such a connection are important and are your jurisdiction. We believe that it is critical that OSBT communicate with City Council and the Planning Board that trailheads and trail connections must follow normal OSMP review and OSBT approval. Contractors for the city need to be instructed that there are important restrictions on any impacts on our open space. This is important information for negotiators and for contractors working on analyses and designs on the potential annexation of CU South and for land use designation changes, for design activity on flood mitigation option D, and for trail connections. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. The second one is Allen Delamere.
Allen Delamere, 525 Mapleton Avenue, representing Citizens for Sanitas. You probably only partially aware, but the developers submitted their plans, their proposal for the 311 Mapleton site, and it was rejected very heavily by planning staff because of the large amount of cut-and-fill associated with cutting into that hillside. That has caused the developers to have to go back to the drawing board. So while they're back at the drawing board, it's probably a good time for the Board of Trustees to really reassess acquisition of the open space other portion of that site. And it may relieve the developers from the burden of dealing with an unstable hillside in order to build the thing that they have. So the issue is that this is right down at the bottom of the acquisition list, and it really needs to be lifted up to a point where it's considered fairly seriously. Now, we do understand that staff are looking into the possibilities of how that site could be used, and some members of our group are meeting with one of the staff members, I believe, next week to find out more about what the current thinking is. But we think that that site is a valuable asset to the open space, particularly there's 15,000 square feet in the nurses dormitory that has been used in the past for office space. And I know that in your current budget, you've got a huge amount of increase of office space planned. So that would be a real natural to put the open space people right close and integral with the open space itself. The other thing is we've got this urban wildland interface, and that's another good reason to really make that a strong separation between our town and our open space. So we're very glad to see that this summer more counters have been put in place. You may have heard from me monotonously saying, "We are seeing a very large increase in the use of open space, and therefore it's really important for us to count it." Well, putting counters, it may be five years before we say, "Ooh, the slope is very, very high, and we have major problems." But at least putting the counters in place today has been a positive step forward. So the last point is that concern is for the open space parking, and that's a neighborhood concern of very large proportions. This past few months, we are seeing more and more use of the open space area by the public, and we're getting all sorts of neighborhood minor fracas problems occurring and so on. So I just implore you to move forward. The rest of the piece of paper I've given you is just a recap of my suggestions that maybe if open space takes the lead and acquires a portion of the site, maybe the city could take the lead and relieve the developers with the difficulty of trying to build something on a steep hillside. Thank you.
Thank you, Allen. So next, we have matters from the department.
Yeah, our first presentation is on the resident survey. You have a brief memo, and Erica Pilcher is going to introduce Erin Caldwell? Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Hi, I'm Erica Pilcher.
Way long ago. Sorry, I knew Erin way long ago when she worked for the city, and I just didn't know if she had the same last name.
Hi, I'm Erica Pilcher. I'm the Recreation and Cultural Stewardship Supervisor for Open Space and Mountain Parks, and I'm here on behalf of Dion Vander Wooten. She couldn't make it this evening. She's the Human Dimensions Supervisor, and she's been working closely with Erin. Erin Caldwell is a senior researcher and project manager for the National Research Center. She enjoys working with local governments to bring the voice of the public into decision-making. And Erin managed the 2010 and the 2016 resident survey for open space and mountain parks. And thanks so much for being here this evening. The results of this survey are really going to help open space understand community values and trends over time, and it informs open space about options for providing high-quality visitor experiences. So along with a variety of other informational inputs, the data from this survey will help tell us a story about the perceptions that residents have of open space, and it can be used to support our upcoming master plan, other departmental projects, and also just inform us on ongoing operations. So, thanks, Erin.
Thank you, Erica, and I am happy to be here to present these results to you. Right. So Erica gave a little bit of this background, but this survey has actually been conducted since 1992, and it's through that primary opportunity to collect information from that general population about their perceptions of open space and mountain parks and how they use it and interact with open space and mountain parks. And the plan is that this survey will continue to be done on a five-year interval moving forward as part of that visitor master plan implementation. So as Erica already said, you know, one of the reasons for doing this survey is to gauge that community perceptions about open space and mountain parks, track the demographic and visitation trends, and it will contribute to the master plan and ongoing operations. It's just one piece of data among others that are used. So as we mentioned, this is the sixth time the survey's been done since 1992, the second time that NRC has done it. It's the first time, actually, that the survey's been done by mail. In the past, it was done by phone. We randomly selected 3,000 households to receive the survey. About two-thirds of those, we targeted to households that are within the city limits, and then a third of those to outside of the city limits but within that sort of Boulder Valley Comprehensive planning area. And there are, in the report, cross tabs that will show you the breakdown of responses by people within those two areas. I'm going to kind of talk about the overall results tonight, but that was of interest to look at that area. We use survey research best practices in designing and implementing the survey. We had three contacts with each of the households that were selected. We started out with a pre-notification postcard, and then we had two waves of the survey. So that was a cover letter signed by Tracy, and then five pages of questions with a postage-paid return envelope. People could return that in. And there was also a URL with a paragraph explaining that those who read Spanish could go online and complete the survey in Spanish if they desired. We saw that at least a couple people went to the website, but nobody actually completed the survey in Spanish at this time, which is not untypical for these kinds of surveys. So we had 582 completed responses. That's a 21% response rate, and that then equates into a margin of error. You've probably heard that term a lot around election polling, of plus or minus 4%. And that's just a way of saying that if we did this survey 95 of 100 times in the same way, we'd find a result that would be within a certain interval, that plus or minus 4%. So it's just an estimate of the precision of results based on the number of responses. And then the last step we do is we wait the survey results. And what that means is we compare the demographic profile from the census or something else to the demographic profile of our respondents, and then make adjustments as necessary. And one of the adjustments we always have to make, not just in Boulder but everywhere, is that younger people are much less likely to respond to a survey than our older people. So we sort of give more weight to the responses from the younger people and less weight to those from the older people. So these little graphs here are kind of showing you that the first bar shows the census norm. So say for those 18 to 34-year-olds, that makes up about almost half of the population. Makes sense, we're in a college town. But we only got, among our respondents, 18% were 18 to 34. So we gave them more weight to make them, again, similar to the demographic profile. Likewise, older people are more likely to respond to our survey, so we gave them less weight. It's one of the survey research best practices. So the topics that we included on the survey were asking people about what they thought was the purpose of open space and mountain parks, their evaluation of it, how frequently they visit open space and mountain parks areas, the types of activities in which they engage, the value they place on open space and mountain parks, and how they get their information. So we started out by asking about what people think are the purpose and the contributions of open space and mountain parks to the community. Respondents were asked, "What is the most important purpose for having open space and mountain parks? Please list only one response." And then they were provided a blank space in which they could write a response in their own words. And then we used a coding guide from past surveys to classify these responses, and we had sort of five main categories. And one of those is one we call aesthetic purposes, and that sort of includes sort of appreciation of open space and mountain parks, of those lands, or sort of passive enjoyment or use of those areas. So it might be things like connecting with the natural beauty, relaxation, and peace, and so on. And 31% of our comments were coded into that category, and that was the top category in 2017. This kind of shows the changes over time since the last survey. So there's been a pretty big increase in the number of comments that were sort of related to that aesthetic purposes of open space and mountain parks. Recreation didn't change much, but it used to be the number-one choice, and now aesthetic purposes has moved into sort of that top priority. About 20% said that they thought preserving wildlife and habitat was the number-one priority, and we had 12% who said sort of growth management was that top priority. The fifth category was quality of life. That's remained constant since '92 at about 10%, so not as much change. But if we look since '92, this is where we see kind of a dramatic change. So it did used to be in the '90s that people thought of that growth management or limiting sprawl as the primary purpose for open space and mountain parks, and sort of that aesthetic was lower. And now we've kind of shifted, and so we're kind of saying we're moving from acquisition to appreciation of the open space mountain parks over time. We also asked those completing the survey to rate specific named items related to the land uses and purposes for open space and mountain parks. So this was a list, and they could rate each one rather than just responding in their own words. The items that they rated came from the Open Space Mountain Parks Charter, and so you can see here that the top purposes we saw in the open-ended responses are still here. They're similar. So people think it's very important, or somewhat important, to preserve the scenic areas and vistas, or those unusual, unique, or unique natural areas, or preserving fragile ecosystems. But we see that eight in 10 do think that still open space and mountain parks does have a role to play in shaping development of the community and limiting sprawl. So that's still important, it's just not any longer like that top of mind for respondents. The city of Boulder has developed a vision for a great community using what they call a sustainability framework. This framework includes seven categories. Respondents were asked to what extent they felt that open space and mountain parks contributes to each of these categories, and nearly all, more than 90%, strongly or somewhat agreed that open space and mountain parks contributes to making Boulder a livable community and making it a healthy and socially thriving community. About eight in 10 felt that open space and mountain parks helps to make Boulder an environmentally sustainable community and an accessible and connected community. And then the other three categories, over half still thought that open space and mountain parks made a contribution, but this is where they really saw the biggest contribution. We asked how frequently respondents visited open space and mountain parks areas and in what activities they engaged when visiting. Nearly everyone has visited an open space and mountain parks area. About one in 10 respondents said that they visit open space and mountain parks areas every day, and three in 10 visit at least twice a week. This was actually a little lower than what we've observed in previous surveys. However, our former surveys were conducted with registered voters by phone, and so it might be that registered voters are a little more active than the general population that we got with this survey. And it could also be an interviewer effect. We know that sometimes... We know that sometimes, even though you know the interviewer does not care what your responses are to the survey, there's still an effect that people might give a slightly different answer when they're responding to an interviewer than self-administering a survey. Those completing the survey were presented with a list of potential activities in which people can engage on Open Space and Mountain Parks lands, and asked in which they had personally taken part during the previous 12 months. And so you can see that this adds to way more than 100% because respondents could just check all the activities in which they've engaged. So nearly all respondents reported having hiked or walked in Open Space and Mountain Parks areas, and 36% had walked a dog. 60% said they had visited Open Space and Mountain Parks areas to observe nature or wildlife. 44% had gone running, and 35% had biked in Open Space and Mountain Parks areas. We had 30% who said they had picnicked in these areas. We did also follow up with asking what the most common activity was that people engaged in, and seven in 10 said that walking or hiking was their most common activity. Respondents were asked to evaluate Open Space and Mountain Parks areas, facilities, and services. Nearly all said the quality of their experiences at Open Space and Mountain Parks areas were excellent, very good, or good. And looking over time, we converted the evaluations to an average rating on a 100-point scale because there's been some changes in that scale over time. And we see that it's similar but maybe a slight decline seen in 2016. And again, that's probably because of that change in mode. Survey research has shown, and our own surveys have shown, that when, again, if you have an interviewer-administered survey, people are more positive than when it's self-administered. It's still a very positive rating, though. We were also asked survey respondents how often they used various visitor facilities and services, and how they would rate the importance and the quality of those amenities. This slide is showing the most frequently used facilities from those included on the survey. And we found that in general, the greater the proportion of respondents who said they'd used a facility or service, the higher importance rating they gave to it, and then also the higher quality rating. So I'm going to show you this graph, and I don't expect you to be able to read this very well, but here we plotted the quality and importance of these items. So as you move from left to right, that's showing higher quality as you go further to the left, to the right. And then as you go from the bottom to the top, that's highest importance. And so you can kind of see they do mostly fall sort of on that line that's saying more important, also higher quality in general. I'm going to zoom in on one of these quadrants. This is that quadrant in the upper left-hand corner, or upper right-hand, that shows those amenities that were considered higher importance and given high-quality ratings. So these are the ones where, you know, people think these are important and you're doing a good job, so this is kudos. So that would be trails, directional trail signs, trash or recycling bins, and trailhead information boards. But now if I kind of slide over, and this is the upper left-hand corner, and so this shows the items that were also considered of high importance but had a little lower quality rating. So you can sort of see the dashed line is right there. It wasn't that these got really atrocious quality ratings, they're very close to that line. But if you wanted to think about things that are important to people that are getting a little lower quality ratings, these might be ones to focus on. So that's vehicle parking, dog stations, and restrooms. All respondents were asked to what extent they thought various recreational activities negatively impacted plants and wildlife on Open Space and Mountain Parks lands. And I do want to emphasize, these are the perceived impacts, this isn't monitored, but this is what people thought. The activities most likely to be perceived as having those impacts were off-leash dogs, horseback riding, and biking. And this is showing the percent that thought each of those had a severe, a major, or a moderate impact. And so it wasn't really a very large proportion who thought these had severe impacts. It was about 15% for the off-leash dogs, 6% for horseback riding, and 7% for biking. So we followed up by asking what participants would think about the acceptability of various management actions that could be taken to protect plants and wildlife. 98% said that increasing education and outreach would be completely somewhat, or somewhat acceptable, or they were neutral about it. Almost nobody was opposed to the idea of increasing education and outreach. And nine in 10 thought it would be acceptable, or that they were neutral about closing trails, closing areas seasonally to protect wildlife, requiring visitors to stay on designated trails, and enforcing existing regulations more vigorously. So if these actions were taken, there wouldn't be very many people who would be opposed to these actions. However, there were a couple where there was more opposition. So only 36% thought that it would be acceptable, or they were neutral about developing a permit or reservation system for peak use times or areas. So that means we have almost, about two-thirds of people that would think that was unacceptable. And we have about three-quarters who think it would be unacceptable to charge fees to access Open Space at peak times. So if these management actions were taken, you could expect some pushback. We also gathered residents' perceptions about how pleasant or unpleasant they felt their interactions were with other Open Space and Mountain Parks visitors. Almost no one rated their interactions with hikers or with Open Space and Mountain Park staff as unpleasant. Nearly everyone also considered their interactions with runners, on-leash dogs, or horseback riders as pleasant or at least neutral. That was about nine in 10. About eight in 10 said that their interactions were very pleasant, pleasant, or neutral with bikers and dogs off-leash. So that means we had about two in 10 who said that their interactions with these types of visitors were unpleasant. And again, we followed up by asking how acceptable people would find different management actions that could be taken to address visitor conflict. And again, we see almost everybody's in favor of increasing education and outreach, requiring visitors to stay on the designated trails. Nine in 10 thought it would be acceptable, or at least they were neutral about requiring dogs to be on or near trails. And nine in 10 were, you know, thought it would be acceptable, or at least were neutral about requiring one-way travel for cyclists on a trail. Again, we had some actions that were viewed a little bit less positively. 59% thought it would be acceptable or neutral to have alternating days for cyclists and hikers, but this means we had about 40% who thought that would not be acceptable. And then we had over half who thought it wouldn't be acceptable to specify specific times of day for cyclists and hikers on a trail. And so this is, kind of wraps up my presentation. So in summary, I'll say, you know, residents were satisfied with their Open Space and Mountain Parks experiences. Possible areas for improvement that I mentioned were those dog stations, restrooms, and visitor parking. Open Space and Mountain Parks visitors do perceive that recreation activities may have impacts on plants and wildlife on Open Space and Mountain Parks lands, and there are a number of actions that they would support, but a few that might face more opposition than I had just mentioned those. So some of the next steps that will be taken by Open Space and Mountain Parks is that these data will be used to support master planning and other departmental efforts. As Erica mentioned, these data will contribute to operations and continuous improvements. You know, the staff is going to recognize the community values that we saw in these results and incorporate those into future projects. And then the survey will be conducted again in 2021. So, do you have any questions? Yes?
So, first off, I want to say, this is a stellar, like, report from this survey. Like, it's so rich with information. I really appreciate the time that you and everyone else has done looking through it yesterday. I was like, "Oh, this is great, this is great, this is great." And I'm kind of new to social science, so please forgive me if I step on some key phrases in surveyology. But from what I've read in this, you know, a lot of this tends to sort of focus on the idea of like, social norms, and sort of what, when you do a survey, what the average group of people will consider a limit of acceptable, you know, whatever it is. And looking through the stuff that's really nice in the back that you gave, like, by age, by gender, by location, and how variable that was, especially interesting to me is by age, because it seems like we have a huge wave of people that are 60 and over that have very different values from those that are 60 and under with respect to how they choose to recreate, what they think about, the way land should be managed. And my question, sorry to build this up for a while...
That's all right.
But my question about this is, from your experience, does this seem, do you think this is, hey, we have a wave of people that have one set of beliefs, and they are aging out gradually, not that I'm in a rush or anything, but, and another wave of people that are coming up with a different set of values? Or do we have something where you're at X age and you have Y values, and when you get to the age X plus 20, you'll have Z values?
Right. That's a little hard for me to answer. It might be interesting to look back at some of those previous surveys and those cross tabs to see if there's a similar, you know, trend going on, if maybe, as you said, because people talk about, you know, is it a cohort effect? You know, boomers have a certain kind of shared experiences versus Generation X versus maybe the silent generation? Or is it an age effect? Like you said, as you age, things will, you know, change in your perspective. I don't have a good answer for that, and it can even be older-time residents versus newer residents. And you could, again, see, it could be that people come in with certain values, and maybe those change over time, or they don't, and they change the community.
Yeah. Well, thanks. Yeah, I was just curious, as we're moving forward to this master plan, it's like, how much weight do you give this very different set of values? Might be really critical because we're looking at what's coming 20, 50 years from now. You know, they might be like, "I don't want to do anything outdoors, I just want my hoverboard," or...
Right.
Anyway, thank you. It was really good.
Other questions?
I have just a couple quick ones. I would just echo what Ken said, this is great analysis and great report. Can you recall what the response rate was for the previous surveys? I mean, I know we shifted a mode of survey administration.
Right. I can remember the last one. So 2010, it was 12%. And this is one of the reasons we changed from phone to mail, is response rates to all surveys are declining, but they have declined precipitously for the phone surveys. So Pew, for example, you know, they do lots of social science research. They used to see response rates in the 30s, you know, 35% or something, and they're down to about 9% now on their phone surveys. So that's one of the reasons that we did change to mail. Like I said, they're going down too, but just not as fast.
Another interesting way to disaggregate would be to look at frequency of use and how that changes people's views on all these things, too. Did you, are you able to...
I don't remember if we did that analysis, or not. Sorry, it's been a while since I produced this report.
I didn't see it, but it would be interesting to just try that disaggregation.
Okay. I think we did it by type of activity, but I'm not sure we did it by frequency of use, so that could be another interesting one to add.
I mean, there was a, there was one thing in there that had the frequency of use by age, but not frequency of use by age by activity, or frequency of activity by visitation or whatever, if I'm recalling correctly.
Wait, it's, okay, it says there's an appendix D that's responses to survey questions by frequency of visitation. Let me just take a look at that. It starts on page 132.
I didn't get that part.
So yes, we actually did, there is an appendix that does break it down by frequency of visitation. Because I'm pretty sure I did almost everything, but...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you, Erin.
Thanks.
Come back soon.
Yes. Well, five years, maybe.
The next presentation we have is Don D'Amico on the South Boulder Creek Restoration Partnership. Thanks, Don.
Good evening. Don D'Amico, Ecological Steward Supervisor for Open Space and Mountain Parks. In your packet is a memo describing a potential partnership between Denver Water and the city to restore and improve aquatic habitat on South Boulder Creek, an open space property basically from South Boulder Road upstream to our property boundary just below Marshall Road. And South Boulder Creek has been the focus of a lot of our resource management efforts for quite a while due to its high ecological value. We've completed a number of habitat-related projects, including aquatic habitat enhancements and restoration, fish passage projects at irrigation diversions, non-native tree removal, riparian planting, and fencing. And last year, we began planning for a project to restore sections of South Boulder Creek that were impacted by the 2013 flood. And the goals of that project are to establish a, or reestablish, an appropriate low-flow channel, stabilize some banks that are eroding as a result of the flood, establish some pools and riffles to increase aquatic habitat diversity, and establish proper sediment transport so we don't get excessive degradation or channel degradation. We currently have 30% or conceptual design plans for this, and we're going to use those to, we're going to include those in an RFP that we hope to send out in about a month to further those designs, take them to construction-level plans and specifications. As you know, Denver Water is planning to enlarge Grosse Reservoir, and currently their, that's part of their Moffett Collection System project. And they're currently in the middle of their permitting, mostly their federal permitting for that project. And the Moffett project includes the creation of a 5,000-acre-foot environmental pool that will be, that will store water supplied by Denver and Lafayette to deliver downstream at specified times and quantities to enhance environmental flows in South Boulder Creek. The Grosse Environmental Pool was part of, or included in, two IGAs that were developed by, or between Denver Water, Boulder, and Lafayette, and approved by City Council in We're hopeful that these in-stream flows will help Boulder meet its in-stream flow goals as part of its in-stream program, which is administered by Public Works and managed by Joanna Bloom, the Source Water Administrator for Public Works, who is here tonight to answer any questions or help answer questions about these IGAs or about the in-stream flow program. So earlier this year, Denver Water approached us and asked about a partnership whereby they would provide funding for our South Boulder Creek project, and that would allow Denver Water to present the project to the Corps of Engineers as additional compensatory mitigation for their Clean Water Act 404 permit. A few months ago, Denver Water and city staff from the city attorney's office, Public Works, and Open Space and Mountain Parks began working on an IGA. We recently completed a draft of that, and that is in Attachment A, the draft of that IGA. Most important points in that IGA, Boulder would design and construct, have construction oversight, basically manage the project, and Denver Water would fund the entire cost of the project, including $50,000 in maintenance costs for any future maintenance beyond when their 404 permit requirements have been met. And then lastly, if Denver Water decides, or can't for one reason or another, build their Grosse Reservoir enlargement project, obviously there won't be a need for that compensatory 404 mitigation, and so they wouldn't, they wouldn't fund the project after that. That's a quick summary of the memo. Joanna and I would be happy to answer any questions about the project, the IGA, the previous IGAs. Any questions you might have?
Who would like to start, Kurt?
Just on that last point, when's the decision point on this, then? Are we, is it our plan to just go ahead with this starting as soon as we can, regardless of what happens to Grosse Reservoir? Or are we waiting to see if they're going to reach another point in their permitting process?
Well, one of the trigger points would be a 404 permit...
Right.
...for the project. And another would be if, if we went out to bid and approved and entered into a contract with a consultant design bill team, then we would, we would basically, assuming that the IGA was, was signed and approved, we would just begin construction of the project after that.
Not necessarily knowing whether Denver was going to be able to enlarge Grosse? I mean, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out here, is are we ready to pay for the whole thing ourselves if, if Grosse doesn't proceed?
In our 2017 budget, we have money set aside for the construction of the project.
Okay.
So, so yes, we could...
So we're on our own timeline at this point, and we hope that Denver ends up paying for it, but it's not a requirement to proceed?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Could you just say a little bit about the operation of the Grosse Environmental Pool and how it hopefully will interact with these changes you're going to make to, to take advantage of that? I mean, are you planning to do mostly winter low-flow management, or...
Joanna would love to answer that question.
Well, it's so good she's here.
I would love to answer that question. Hi, I'm Joanna Bloom from Public Works. So to answer your question, the IGA between Boulder and the City of Lafayette agrees that Boulder will have the primary responsibility to... Boulder will have the primary responsibility to maintain in-stream flows in the summer period, May through September. And then Lafayette, as part of their municipal operations, would deliver water through these reaches for the winter. And I think there's some wiggle room in that. It's the 5,000-acre-foot pool is divided 3,000 Lafayette, 2,000 Boulder generally, but there's some overlap. So once operations are up and running, that might shift a little.
Okay. And establishing the low-flow channel helps get the most use out of that wintertime deliveries from our partners?
Yes. And so I think the state tried to get an in-stream flow in this reach. It's kind of divided into two segments back in the 80s. And they do have an in-stream flow on South Boulder Creek, but it was limited by water availability. And so this would be a big boost to the in-stream flow program, and I'm certain Don could speak to the ecological benefits. But in terms of just wet water being there, this has been identified as the main avenue for providing that water.
And that's all under our control, so we're not relying on somebody else's water right?
Right, no. So Boulder will still have to do some work in determining the exact water rates that it'll use, but Boulder will identify its own portion for that 2,000-acre-foot bucket. And then Lafayette actually already has decreed water for Gross Reservoir, so they're taken care of in the winter.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
At some point, I don't know if we're going to get more of a briefing on the details of this work you're going to do. I know we'd all find it interesting. I'm particularly interested in plans to reduce the degradation going on in South Boulder Creek, which creates such an interesting situation for flood control.
Sure. We can share our 30% design plans and some of the narrative that goes with that describes the project.
Okay. Well, whatever works best, I know it would be of interest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Yeah, I had one question, but maybe it should just be tabled until that's future staff presentation, which is basically, you know, this project is coming forward based on things that have happened to the reaches, based on past land uses and the 2013 flooding. It makes me think about, will any of this work be undermined by future land uses? The CU South discussion has definitely spun up, and obviously the creek is right next to CU South. Now, I know that all development at CU South is purely conjecture at this point, but just what are staff's thoughts on this?
Yeah, we thought about that, and obviously two big projects in close proximity.
Yeah.
We don't feel that there will be any, necessarily any hydrologic impacts if the flood mitigation project, the Option D, is constructed. There could potentially be an intersection right at South Boulder Creek and US 36 where the berm ends, close to the creek. But without any detail as to what any of those improvements associated with the berm are, it's kind of hard to tell. But that would be the only... We anticipate that would be the only place. It would be purely kind of a physical overlap.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I got a lot of the questions answered, but I would be interested in, like Kurt, more information as the designs go along, because I'm interested in the sediment transfer and, you know, where we would be going with the canopy. And you mentioned that there'd be in-stream covers, so I guess down the road, we can talk about what that would look like.
Sure. And if you're interested in visiting the site, we'd love to take you out there, too.
We always like that.
We always like that.
Great. Heels, right.
Speaking of which...
Thank you.
Yeah, speaking of which, there's a written update in the packet for the Boulder Creek Restoration Projects, the two Boulder Creek Restoration Projects that you've heard about before a couple of times. Those are close to completion. We anticipate the upstream, what we call the Confluence Project upstream of 61st, to be completed in the next week or two. The downstream project below 61st is substantially completed except for an augmentation station down at the Green Ditch. And we're hoping that later this summer... Well, yeah, later this summer, we're hoping to kind of do a grand opening, ribbon-cutting visit to the site to show you all the work that's been done out there.
It's very much worth it for people who are interested in that stuff. It's just an amazing amount of work that's gone out there, so... And if that can be open to the public too, I think that would be great. So, thanks.
Sure.
Thanks, Don.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Don. And Joanna, thank you. Those are our updates from staff. Recognizing we have a lot of public hearings tonight, we tried to have some written updates and keep the presentations to a minimum.
Awesome.
So matters from the board. Do we have Kevin?
One wee one.
Okay.
I'll try and be quick. In the last week, I've had two different groups of people who've asked to meet with me regarding the sort of how the master plan's coming along. And both of them expressed the same generalized concern of interest in knowing sort of what's going to be addressed in the master plan, what will be sort of subtended into other plans. And I see that in November, there's the portfolio for the master plan is scheduled to be presented. And I was just wondering if we might be able to have something in advance of, hey, here's the portfolio, to be like, hey, what would you like in the portfolio? Here's what we're thinking in the portfolio. And that might give the public a chance to address their concerns before you get to the point where you're already there.
Hi, Darren Wagner, Project Manager for the Master Plan. So thank you for the lead-in. It's certainly something that we anticipate engaging the board around a discussion prior to the release of the portfolio. We, as just a very mini update, have recently awarded a contract to our consultant, and so we just had our kickoff meeting with them last week. And so we are in the process of building out the schedule, looking at potential engagement strategies, and really just in the very early stages of putting those things together. And so we'll certainly be putting questions to the board just like that in terms of how and when would you like to be engaged? And a large portion of that conversation can be had at the retreat, which has been scheduled now for the end of August. So that'll be a really nice opportunity to really make sure we have time to hear from you around a number of those questions.
Great. Perfect.
Yep.
Thanks, Darren.
I have two little updates on the 50th, just to give you very quickly what we're doing on that. So we're working, still on the history, and we had a little flatter. It's kind of tentative, but there's quite a few things coming along. We'll have a brass band that'll be in the amphitheater on Flagstaff, and the logo's done. And we have kind of this new slogan, which is celebrating 50 years of a wild idea, which I think is pretty good. And we're working with CU on what this symposium will look like, but there's not really any details much on that. And then I thought I would give you a quick update on the Greenway plan, the meeting that we had, the Advisory Committee. That was on May 11th, and Andrea went with me, which was great, because we were looking at some transportation issues, and she had that history. So we looked at the seat for the REPO underpass project, and we'll be looking more into considerations of the approach and some of the design issues. And then we did recommend and approve the Greenways Capital Improvements Program for the next year or so. Andre will be going next year with me for the meetings, but... So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that, and that's all I have from matters. Okay.
Two quick things. I wanted to second what Kevin said, but I won't repeat it. One question was, looking at the Prairie Dog Working Group output, how much of a workload is that for staff? I had the sense that the output generated a lot of projects to be done, probably, you know, is to be expected given the nature of what they were undertaking and the amount of time in which they had to undertake it. But I'm curious, you know, is... Some of the recommendations seem to be fairly broad, and I'd be curious to get a sense of, you know, how much new work does this bring to you?
So, good question. We still don't... We don't know the full impact of that until we kind of start working with the committee out of the Prairie Dog Working Group that's going to be implementing many of the recommendations in there. We're anticipating that we'll be able to handle it by shifting workload into that from other things. A second priority of the Wildlife Group is kind of related, but it is very related, which is working on getting the permits for additional relocation sites for this year. And so that's currently underway. The pressure or the driver is the several sites that require relocation of prairie dogs this year, and that's the site out by the Diagonal Highway. The Foothills Park has a significant number of prairie dogs still that need to be moved. And another emergent site may also need to have some prairie dogs moved this year. So we're trying to figure out, how do we handle all that while we also do some of the work that the Prairie Dog Working Group asked us to look into? And it's going to be a fairly significant load on staff through the summer to get this done, but we will do our best to provide that work.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
The other... This is perhaps as much for the board as for staff, but I don't think we've had a discussion exactly about what we're talking about at the retreat. I think we've... I may have missed it. I think we've succeeded in scheduling it, and I'm... You know, for me, I would certainly prioritize the master planning process, both in terms of process and whatever. And I don't know if that consumes an entire retreat or not, but I thought, you know, maybe it's worth just spending a... Or whatever. If people had other thoughts, because often if someone has something in which they want a staff presentation, there's a fair amount of lead time associated with that. And so rather than wait till July, just... I should say, I don't have anything specific in mind beyond the master planning process, but I think everyone else does. Probably a good time as any to raise that.
I think... I mean, I have something I'd like, maybe a presentation on that would inform me in advance of the master planning process, which is, as crowding remains a really big concern for City Council, for us, for staff and for the public, if we could have a presentation about sort of how visitation is shifting or has shifted in recent years so that when we start moving forward, not only can I address that for the plan, but also when people ask, like, why is it so crowded?
So we're in the middle of the visitation study right now. We could look at what some of that preliminary information is on that and try to pull together what we've been able to assess so far. It may not be well-analyzed, and Erica Pilcher may have some additional information on that.
Yes, when we complete the results or the findings from the visitation study, we will have information about the numbers of people and the trends. However, we haven't specifically asked in our visitor surveys or resident surveys about crowding or congestion or perceptions on those things. And so really, when we look at crowding, it's kind of the negative evaluation of those numbers. So we'll have the numbers, but if we want to know more about how people feel about it, we would have to ask those questions. We have heard from some folks in open-ended survey questions where maybe that, you know, that came up as a topic, you know, they felt crowded, or perhaps they wouldn't want to come back to a certain location because of those things, but we would have to look into that a little bit more.
Sure. Maybe just like 10 or 15 minutes on how things have been changing, even if it's just demographically, like where people are going more and how many people. Might give me a little heads up, would be nice.
We'll be able to provide that.
Thanks.
And just a little background, Molly and I did meet with Heidi Brinkman and talked about a draft... Pulling together a draft agenda for the retreat that Molly would then circulate with the board. So that's where... We did meet with Heidi. We're just expecting the draft to come back from her, and we'll get that out to you, and you can provide feedback. And just so you know, I think about half of the time is devoted to the master plan, and the other half is really around like, how are meetings going, you know, checking in on minutes, you know, dynamics of, you know, how are our staff and the board doing? And so things like that, that you would normally check in with a retreat. But again, that draft will get out to you and get your feedback.
So I guess we're moving to the Trail Easement, so...
Yes, and, okay, Dan Burke and Luke McKay. Is Luke going to be part of this?
He'll be by my side.
He'll be by your side, okay.
And I'm a rookie with this, so I might need a little guidance here. Good evening, Board. My name is Dan Burke. I'm the Real Estate Services Work Group Supervisor for Open Space and Mountain Parks, and I am joined by Luke McKay, a property agent who's been involved in this project. And although Steve Armstead, Project Coordinator, is unable to be here tonight, I just wanted to put a plug into him for the amount of expertise and involvement he has had with the Public Trail Easement acquisition over the past 15 or 16 months or so. And let's see if I've got it right. No.
I think you pointed over there.
Oh. There we go. So before I go into a lot of the details about the Trail Easement Acquisition Project, I thought I'd first start off with just a general overview of the project. So the Trail Easement that we would be... That we're seeking to acquire would encompass approximately 16 acres of privately-held land, land that is located just to the west of North Foothills Highway, a few miles north of the city limits of Boulder. The purchase price for the Trail Easement acquisition, as determined by an independent appraiser... appraisal that the department contracted out for, is $376,200. The length of the easement is perpetual, so unlike some easements that may expire after five, 10, 25 years, the rights that the city would be acquiring through this easement will be permanent in nature. I'd like to point out that with, like, conservation easements and trail easements, that the land itself will remain under private ownership, and in this case, the private owner at this current time is Green Hill Investments LLC. And one more point to point out about the 16 acres that will be encumbered by the Trail Easement Acquisition is that there already is a conservation easement that is jointly held by the city and the county over this property. And in fact, it encumbers the whole Green Hill Investments property in addition, just to this... Not just including the 16 acres that the Trail Easement would encumber. So looking at some more details, and specifically, what rights does this Public Trail Easement Acquisition convey to the city? Well, there's several. First and foremost, and perhaps the motivating factor for this project, is the right for the city to construct, maintain and manage a public trail for passive recreational use anywhere within the defined 16-acre Trail Easement area on Green Hill Investments property. So we have the flexibility to locate the trail anywhere within that hatched area that's located down on the southwest portion of Green Hill Investments property. Additionally, we... The city would obtain the rights for land management and restoration within the 16-acre Trail Easement area. And this is an important consideration. If you look at the inset map to the right, the olive-green colored to the west and to the south of the easement area is land that is already managed by Open Space and Mountain Parks. So be able to continue that management philosophy onto the 16 acres in which we don't have that right under the conservation easement is an important factor and one that we were excited to write into the Trail Easement Agreement. And also, the city will obtain the right to prohibit the placement of any non-trail-related structures within the 16-acre area. So we look at it as a Trail Easement plus, if you will, because there's additional rights that are afforded to the city. So why was this Trail Easement identified as a priority for acquisition? Well, the impetus for the purchase of the Public Trail Easement stems from the North Trail Study Area Plan that was approved by council in the summer of 2016, and the future North Sky Trail that the NTSA plan calls for. Taking a closer look into the details of the NTSA plan, there was... Taking a closer look into the details of the NTSA Plan, there was, there was specific guidance that was provided in regards to the North Trail, or North Sky Trail. And that guidance includes encouragement for the staff to use the railroad grade when, and other existing trails whenever feasible. And I'll speak more in detail about the railroad grade in just a bit. Further guidance regarding the North Sky Trail is to minimize restore disturbance as much as feasible when creation of new trail tread is necessary. And also, and specifically, utilize, if possible, the conservation easement property, which is the Green Hill Investments LLC property, as, as that property currently has lower quality habitat and would allow for less impactful drainage crossings. Furthermore, at the time when city council approved the NTSA Plan in the summer of 16, they provided additional direction and guidance in regards to the North Sky Trail. City Council's direction is to minimize the footprint of the North Sky Trail and find an alignment that minimizes natural resource impacts. And again, to reiterate, to reiterate again, to use best efforts to locate the trail through the conservation easement property, again, which is Green Hill's investment. So if we look at, at the segment of the North Scale Trail, Trail Alignment that would be affected by this bringing onboard, the acquisition of this Trail Easement, the benefits of securing the Trail Easement is, is better understood. So the map on the left will, and the yellow circle shows you the area where the Trail Easement Area will be located and, and its relation to the conceptual alignment of the North Sky Trail. The middle map, and I'd like to point out that the North Sky Trail would be following for a good part of, of the way, on its way north from Foothills Trail up to Joda Ranch on what is, what would, what is called the railroad grade that is present on the landscape. The middle map will, has two colorations. The yellow is the conceptual alignment as the trail, North Sky Trail as it now is conceived. And the blue color is actually the railroad grade. So you could see that on Open Space and Mountain Parks Property where the green line is located, that is where the trail, the conceptual trail would now need to leave the railroad grade in order to get up and around the private property that is Green Hill Investments property. And in this slide map, Green Hill's Investment Property is outlined in red. So in order to make that corner, we need to leave the railroad grade much sooner than the conservation easement property, or in order to gain the elevation needed to make, make, make it around the privately held property. Now, if you, if we turn our attention to the map on the right, and we add in the use of the Trail Easement Area, the light blue would be where the conceptual trail alignment could be placed utilizing the Trail Easement. So this does several things. First and foremost, the conceptual alignment would be moved further east, and what that means is further downhill, less elevation, and we would be able to stay on the railroad grade for a significantly longer portion of time before we had to get up and around Raytheon Property, which would be the next private property that we would encounter. So we eventually do need to still get back onto Open Space and Mountain Parks Property, but, but a much greater distance in which we would be able to utilize the railroad grade for a longer period of time and to stay at a lower elevation. So the summary of these benefits, so like I've been saying, that the trail would be able to stay on the railroad grade for a longer distance. It would involve less impactful drainage crossings, riparian and wetland habitat, as drainages are lower. And so off on the left, the top left hand is a picture of the typical look of the railroad grade, just to the south of the conservation easement property. To the right would show typical drainage crossings that we're, that we're encountering in this area. And in the lower elevation, the narrower the drainages, and the less span you have to take to cross those drainages. And also, the trail would cross lower quality habitat that's on, that's, that's seen on the private property versus the Open Space and Mountain Park Managed Property. And that, and that could be seen on the lower left-hand slide, which involves terrain and slope favors a more sustainable trail design. That's a very typical look of that Trail Easement Area, a more gentle slope, and a little bit less quality of habitat. Just want to point out in regards to habitat, that we will be obtaining land management rights and habitat restoration rights within the Trail Easement. So our hope is, over time, that we can bring the quality of that habitat on par to the surrounding landscape. So if, if the North Scale, if the Trail Easement Project is approved, some next steps are, is the 16-acre easement area will be factored into the alignment and design of the North Sky Trail as part of site planning for the area. In addition to just trail alignment and design, site planning for the entire North Sky Trail, as well as the other trails in the, in, in this North Foothills area, will also address natural, cultural, scenic, recreational resources and visitor services for this area. And that work is, is to be, to begin in earnest in 2018, and, and looking to be completed in 2018. So staff believes this acquisition project satisfies several Open Space Charter purposes, first and foremost being the Charter Purpose of Preservation of Land for Passive Recreational Again, because we are able to obtain rights for land management and habitat, habitat restoration, we also believe that, that we satisfy the Charter Purpose of the Preservation of Wildlife Habits and Fragile Ecosystems. And because there's rights in the city to prohibit the construction or placement of any non-trail-related buildings and structures within the 16-acre area, satisfying the Charter Purpose of the Preservation of Scenic Areas and Vistas, of which this portion of Green Hill's Investment Property is very high in terms of its scenic In terms of post-acquisition, if there's some immediate attention that we need to put our attention to, that staff is counting on and, and planning for a couple of items related to fencing needs, in order to ready the, the Trail Easement Area for the placement of the North Sky Trail. And that would be the relocation and/or elimination of several fences that are currently on, on the property, and also possibly the placement of new fencing on, on Green Hill Investments Property and the Trail Easement Area. So that really concludes my PowerPoint presentation. And with that, staff is requesting that the Open Space Board of Trustees recommend that Boulder City Council approve the purchase of a Public Trail Easement deed over approximately 16 acres of land at a portion of 6859 North Foothills Highway from Green Hill Investments LLC for $376,266 for Open Space and Mountain Parks purposes. And with that, either myself or Luke will be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Let's start. Do you want to describe a little bit, Dan, the monitoring and assessment that's going on right now, and then will continue in this 16 acres?
As far as, as, like remediation and monitoring?
You're doing soil sampling, right?
Yes.
Why don't you just describe?
Yeah, yeah. So as part of our due diligence, for every acquisition we do, we always order and conduct a, a Phase One Environmental Assessment of our properties. In this case, we're certainly going to be carrying out that. In addition to that, a Phase One would typically tell you, if, if they would recommend any future steps that you would, that you ought to do, or would recommend that nothing is, nothing has come out from this Phase One, and, and we may stop there and looking at anything further. In this case, we are going ahead during the full Phase One, and we are collecting a soil sampling along the whole conceptual trail route. And that sampling has already started. Thirty-two separate soil samples were collected along the trail route, and we'll know the results probably within, within the month. In fact, I think we'll get the full Phase One Environmental Assessment Report back within a month's time. Well, be, and that is a contingency in the purchase agreement, that if the city has any concerns over this or any other assessment that we, that we do, that we would have the right to get out of the contract. So yes, we are doing some more detailed due diligence that we typically would do on an acquisition project.
Thanks.
I had one question. Because the Trail Easement prohibits the placement of non-trail-related buildings and structures, what rights does the landowner retain at this point?
Well, one of the questions that I had offhand is, boy, $376,000 for a Trail Easement sounds, sounds expensive.
Yeah.
And the reason for that is that when the appraiser looked at the rights that were being given up, they determined that about 90% of the rights that you would have as a landowner to this property are, are really relinquished through this Trail Easement, because it's just not the right to put a trail anywhere within the 16 acres. Is there, they, the private landowner cannot have motorized vehicles on the 16 acres. They can't put buildings or structures on the 16 acres. So yes, very limited rights would remain for the owner on these 16 acres. And, and that's why it probably was appraised higher than a typical Trail Easement would be.
Okay. And by extension, did we make an attempt to acquire it in fee?
At, when our first conversations with the landowner began about 16 months ago, fee acquisition was definitely one of the options that we put on the table, and the landowners were not interested in relinquishing any ownership at that time. So actually, negotiations paused for a little bit at that point until we came back with a Trail Easement concept.
Okay. Ninety percent of the rights, okay. Thank you.
Two somewhat related questions. One is, and I should know this, but I confess I don't, is there anywhere else in the system where we have a trail that goes to private property on both sides? I couldn't picture one, but...
I actually look back for examples of Trail Easement acquisitions. And, and, you know, we go back, our acquisitions over 100 years ago, but I, this, I don't know if this is the first, but it very may well be one of the firsts of, of this kind. And in fact, we didn't even have a template for a Trail Easement Agreement, so I had, had to go out and, and with city attorney's office and put one together because we didn't have a template ready at hand, so. Yeah.
Tom, we actually have been given, dedicated several Trail Easements through the land use process, through subdivisions, planned use developments, things like that, development approvals, where the Trail Easements do go through things like commercial complexes and stuff. Most of those trails are those paved paths we've talked about before that are now managed by Greenways, but those are still, several of them are still OSMP easements.
Thanks.
But in terms of an acquisition, I think this is a little new territory.
My other question is, I'm assuming, but you tell me if I'm wrong, that it would be trespassing to go off the trail? But this is set up so that it's, you, we're only buying the rights for people to go on the trail?
Yes, yes.
There's no right to go off the trail, even though it would...
That is correct. That, those terms are in the easement, and I believe this potentially would be an HCA area as well. So it would be on trail, even leaving the conservation easement property. But yes, so specifically written into the agreement is on trail.
Okay, thanks.
Kevin, any question? I just had a general observation, and I just wanted to say that I think we did a great job trying to make this work out kind of for everybody. And I looked at previous CE's, and we're not out of the ballpark tremendously for the price, so I don't think it's, you know, too high. I would want to make sure that the monitoring does, is adequately funded in the future also, so, in terms of if we have any kind of legal or anything coming up in the future that could happen with the trail.
Sure, and we would keep up to date if anything did come up, for sure.
Okay. And, anything?
Any public?
We're going to do public next. My understanding was we were kind of doing qualifying. Yeah. Okay. Steve Watts?
No, it's not Steve Watts. Hi, I'm Steve Watts. I live at 2670 13th Street here in the city of Boulder. I'd like to thank the trustees this evening for taking on this recommendation from staff. Thank the staff for their work, their effort in this. Certainly, and also, I need to mention that I'm the, the Executive Director of Boulder Mountain Bike Alliance, a local nonprofit. Of course, we were, we advocated very strongly for the North Sky Trail, and we recognized that this easement was critical to being able to preserve some of the ideals that OSMP has for their properties. So we want to thank them for, you know, taking that into consideration, consideration, taking this process very serious and moving on it very expeditiously. And that, we simply just want to state that we support the purchase of this easement. We think it's critical for not only the trail alignment that makes sense, but also it does show that OSMP is, is working very diligently to see to fruition the, the needs and wants of the community in establishing the North Sky Trail, which is so important for the regional connector from North Boulder onward to Hile Two and onward to Lyons. So thank you very much for your time, and I hope that you will approve this this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. So we go back to more discussion. If there's not discussion, are we prepared to?
I just wanted to say, I think this is the, one of those times when I feel like it all worked out really well. And I remember banging my head on the table, trying to say, can we just do a conservation easement? And now it's working. So I think this is going to make a better trail. It's going to be better for the natural environment. It's like the best we could do with what we got. So great job to all the staff for making it happen.
Are we ready to make a motion?
I'll, I'll move, because I just said nice things. So I moved the, oh wait, we need a second.
Move first.
Move first.
Sorry. I'll read the whole thing. I moved that the Open Space Board of Trustees recommend that the city, or the Boulder City Council approve the purchase of a public trail as easement deed over approximately 16 acres of land at a portion of 6859 North Foothills Highway from Green Hill Investments LLC for $376,266 for Open Space and Mountain Parks purposes.
Second? All in favor?
Thank you, Dan and Luke. And Steve is not here, but Steve Armstead was very involved with this. And I have to give those three folks a lot of credit for hitting some dead ends and keeping it alive. And so they did great creative work and working with the property owner and also with the city attorney's office helped us quite a bit as well. So thanks, team.
So I guess moving on, we're doing the capital improvement program budget.
Abby Poniatowski is joining us for this item.
Good evening. I'm Abby Poniatowski, and here for the third time to review the Capital Improvement Program. As you've seen before you, not a lot of changes from what you've experienced in the first or second touch, but just to have a sense of where we've been, where we are, and what we're doing next. Third time here for CIP. The next go-round on July 12th will actually move into the operating component of our budget and integrate and touch on some of the details that you've had related to staffing, maintenance, funding, as well as our campus visioning. So look forward to that next meeting. So what we plan to do tonight, just this brief discussion, again, will remind you of the city's economic forecast, review what was discussed at the last board meeting, answer any questions, have a public hearing, and hopefully get to recommendation. So this is similar to what Lauren Kilcoin, our Financial Services Manager, has shared in the last session, no changes. But we, again, are basing our fund financial and financial planning on conservative budget with spending that's within with spending that's within the means of the revenues that are anticipated. And the additional guidance that's still coming from central budget, which we'll see hopefully in update at the next meeting, is related to the FEMA reimbursement. So in the top half of the fund financial, hopefully we get some refinement and a better understanding of what we'll anticipate for FEMA reimbursements. So again, I think we've done a solid job at really starting to understand what our planning needs are for out-years as we shift towards stewardship and have a budget that's responsible with respect to the economic climate that we see coming. So just a review to make sure that we captured what you heard in our budget, our CIP, and operating integrate what we've heard from you, is the need to resolve the department's state-based staff needs for equipment, materials, vehicles, and office. We also heard the need to appreciate our continued transition to move towards stewardship and continue to have that analysis inform what we're doing related to those stewardship efforts. And we also heard a recommended, a recommendation for the draft that was discussed at the last So if you have questions, anything that you thought of between then and now that you'd like to ask, please let us know, and hopefully we can get to those before we go to public hearing and then a recommendation for a motion.
Do you want to start?
I have nothing.
Okay. I had one question, and maybe it's a little too late to be bringing this out, but when I'm looking at $2.4 million for the new property for open space, and I did kind of little calling around in Boulder to find out what buildings and that type of thing are, it feels like that's really low, and I just want to make that statement. And I don't know how we started addressing that, but it's a comment that, I mean, there was a building in Gunbarrel that's 25,000 square feet for $2.1 million. That's just a shell. So, you know, I'd like to put it out there that it's a good consideration. I would love for staff and everything to be combined, you know, so...
So...
Just a comment, it's a little bit late in the game to be making these observations.
No, it's a great observation, and we appreciate. So for clarification, the recommendation in next year's CIP is just for transitional space. If you remember, last month we talked about needing to move twice. Right now, we have yet to identify or assess where we'd go for a future campus based on what's available. And so this 2.5 would cover the study and analysis to get us there, as well as any renovation, modification of a transitional leased space. And so that's why it is looking low. As we understand more what our needs are for the future campus, so likely in next year's CIP, you'd see a much larger allocation for funding. We still need to talk about how we would fund that campus, whether it would be a combination of debt, cash, fund balance, and reserves. So we haven't quite gotten there yet, but we do anticipate the campus to be a much larger number than what's in for '20.
Okay. I just wanted to go up.
I thought that 2.4 million was going to like a small ranch home that uses central functioning, and you'd make all staff work from Starbucks.
Okay. Are we prepared to...
Is anyone signed up for public comment?
Okay.
So we have a recommended motion that's there, if you'd like to use that. Leah's going to switch it.
Well, I'll move that the Open Space Board of Trustees approve...
This is the wrong motion.
Oh!
This is...
They start the same.
This is Boulder Valley Farm.
Yeah.
In the beginning, so it's like two of them.
Yeah.
Again.
We're on CIP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's just the same amount of money. Okay.
Close.
My bad. I just saw a number. Okay.
So I will move that the Open Space Board of Trustees approve and recommend that Planning Board approve an appropriation of $9,808,000 in 2018 from the Open Space Fund CIP as outlined in this memorandum and related attachments, and recommend that $355,300 be appropriated from the city's Lottery Fund CIP in 2018 as outlined in this memorandum and related attachments.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
All in favor?
Great. And thanks to Lauren and the CIP for all of their work on this.
Right. Another team effort. Go team! Team OSMP. So the next puzzle piece for the night is Boulder Valley Farm.
See if I can get everything situated.
And Bethany Collins, sorry. Bethany Collins is going to be presenting.
Winded.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This agenda item is a request for a recommendation to approve the purchase of the Boulder Valley Farm open space property, and a secondary recommendation to approve the potential future disposal of a portion of the property found to be appropriate. I'd like to take a little time this evening to present some photos and detail what makes this proposed acquisition so special. I'm glad many of you have been able to tour the property and see its scale and unique values in person. As a quick overview of the proposed acquisition, the Boulder Valley Farm property, recognizable from north 95th Street by its dark brown buildings and fencing, is a 615-acre agricultural complex featuring, among other exceptional attributes, important soils, eight ponds, and almost one and a half miles of Boulder Creek frontage. The $9.5 million purchase price will include the residences and agricultural infrastructure associated with the farm, as well as significant water rights. The project also offers the opportunity to acquire the remaining mineral and oil and gas royalty holdings of the Boulder Valley Farm Corporation, both on this property and the adjacent Culver property previously acquired by the city. This guarantees the best possible control of any future oil and gas development on a property that has active wells under existing leases. This property is the remaining portion of the historic 950-acre cattle ranch owned by the Don and Rosalie Culver family since 1961. The city acquired 250 acres west of 95th Street from the Culvers in the 1990s, as well as conservation easements over portions of the farm in 1992 and 2006. The farm's adjacency to other city and county property interests make it attractive from a habitat connectivity and landscape scale perspective. The property is also bisected by the Union Pacific RTD right-of-way, which holds potential for a future regional trail connection from Belmont to Erie. Now I'd like to present the property's important features and valuable resources in the context of our OSMP charter purposes, and demonstrate why the farm is considered a high priority for acquisition by program staff and represents an important addition to the OSMP system. In terms of water resources, the proposed acquisition includes valuable water rights used to irrigate the farm's expansive agricultural fields. The property also hosts open ditch corridors along the Leggett and lower Boulder ditches, excuse me, and a nearly one and a half mile stretch of Boulder Creek and its associated floodplain. This is the longest remaining segment of the creek in private ownership in Boulder County, and ownership would allow for extension of the Boulder Creek Master Plan restoration work that is occurring both up and downstream of this parcel. This riparian corridor also boasts cottonwood gallery forests that are important to canopy nesting riparian songbirds, and is a movement corridor for deer and other mammals. Property also includes eight historic gravel ponds, and this complex boasts healthy wetlands while also offering extensive wetland restoration opportunities. Additionally, as demonstrated in the 2013 flood, a large portion of the farm falls in the Boulder Creek floodplain. Protection and management of the floodplain through acquisition could help protect human infrastructure downstream. Moving on to the farm's valuable ecological resources, the Boulder Valley Comp Plan shows the property as being contiguous to parcels with known populations of Preble's metal jumping mouse, and its riparian areas near open water and adjacent uplands consisting of dense ground-level vegetation could provide appropriate habitat for the federally threatened species. Also, the extensive hayfields on the property may provide habitat for uncommon grassland nesting birds, nesting songbirds like bobolinks, a rare breeding species in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, and a management indicator species identified in OSMP's grassland management plan, or grassland plan, excuse me. From a scenic perspective, the property is highly visible from surrounding private and open space properties and 95th Street, and offers sweeping views of the Front Range and towards the Eastern Plains. Despite being an agricultural operation, the farm, an active agricultural operation, excuse me, the farm boasts important natural area attributes. It has historically supported one of the largest heroneries in Colorado, with numbers reaching over 200 nests in the 1990s. Heron numbers have since declined, in part because of the recent presence of the bald eagle pair that began nesting on the property in 2014. However, herons do still frequent the property's ponds and riparian corridor, as many of you saw, and at least one active nest has been found there in 2017. Nevertheless, the pair of nesting bald eagles on the property is a sign of high-quality riparian and aquatic habitat. The pair has fledged young successfully in 2015 and 2016, and have three nestlings this year, as shown in the lower picture on the screen. The property also includes an active osprey nest relocated here in 2016 in collaboration with Excel Energy and Colorado Parks and Wildlife and the Girl Scouts. Additionally, outcroppings of Fox Hill sandstones seen in the rare White Rock geological formation found on OSMP properties to the west are found on the farm. Attributes such as these truly make the property unusual, spectacular, and unique. Moving on to its agricultural significance, as the map on the screen shows, a majority of the property's agricultural fields are designated as farmlands of national, state, or local importance. Boulder Valley Farm is a working cattle ranch that has historically supported up to 150 head and produced 500 tons of Roman orchard grass hay. The Culvers initially raised a national championship herd of Charolee cattle, and later a herd of Aberdeen Black Angus cattle. Agricultural fields are encompassed by approximately 220 acres of irrigated hay and grass pasture, 55 acres of irrigated alfalfa, 260 acres of river corridor pasture, and 60 acres of dry land pasture. The farm includes a headquarters compound where a majority of the property's improvements are located, including equipment barns, horse stalls, and cattle handling infrastructure. Aesthetically appealing for its pastoral character, Boulder Valley Farm's historical agricultural operation and buildings also contribute to the agricultural history and quality of life in the area. The property was homesteaded in 1885 by Jeremiah and Augusta Leggett, and the Culvers later purchased the property from Axel Nielsen, a locally renowned businessman and philanthropist who is reported to have hosted President Dwight D. Eisenhower in the property's iconic red brick home. During the 1990s, the Culvers had historic and cultural surveys performed by Boulder County, which found the property eligible for local landmark and National Register of Historic Places designation. However, the family never pursued listing. The reports state, displaying a high degree of integrity, the farmhouse, barn, garage, and concrete silo at Boulder Valley Farm are historically and architecturally significant for their association with the development of agriculture in the Boulder Valley. The property accrues additional significance because it remained in the hands of a single pioneer family, the Leggits, from the time it was homesteaded in the 1880s until circa 1940. The brick farmhouse circa 1890 and barn 1907 are particularly significant for their architecture. The farmhouse is one of only a very few remaining two-story brick farmhouses built before the turn of the century, and the barn is a rare example of a gambrel roof double wing plan The property's size, location, and water features make it appealing for public access and potential passive recreation, including hiking, biking, and bird watching. Also, the ponds have historically been privately fished for bass, bluegill, and crappie, and a segment of the potential Union Pacific RTD Belmont to Erie regional trail bisects to the farm, which could provide future public access opportunities. Careful management considerations will be made to balance public use with ongoing agricultural operations and protection of the sensitive environmental resources. The growing town of Erie's comprehensive planning area boundary and Boulder Valley comprehensive planning area connect at the eastern boundary of the property. Both plans indicate natural area, open space, and agricultural-type land use in this area, potentially reflecting an intended spatial definition of the urban core of Erie, buffer to the more extensive residential developments just east of 287, and priorities to preserve the area's agricultural heritage. Additionally, because of its size and partial location in Area 3 of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, the farm is arguably specifically identified in the 2013 OSMP acquisition plans' BVCP priority acquisition area. Now moving on from charter purposes, I'd like to touch on the current conserve status of the farm. The terms of the several conservation agreements encumbering the property vary, with most of the protections being focused on the agricultural values and silent or vague on the other resource values. However, none of the agreements have a requirement or obligation to maintain the agricultural use of the property, only a right to do so, and none of them require a management penalty for any portion of the property. It is quite conceivable that a future private owner of the farm would struggle with management of this unique agricultural block and/or convert some or all of the property from agricultural productivity. Additionally, a large amount of the water rights used on the property are not restricted and are separately saleable. The various conservation agreements also permit activities like private waterfowl hunting and other uses that would be restricted under city ownership. And managing and monitoring compliance with the agreements held by multiple agencies, and sometimes with conflicting terms, requires a great deal of staff time considering the lack of ownership interest in the property. Fee acquisition of the property and water rights represents the opportunity for the city to control the management of the agricultural operation and other uses of the property, and ensure the availability of water to irrigate the property. It would also allow the city to manage public access and possibly integrate a wider application of other OSMP purposes in addition to the traditional agricultural operation, including expanded restoration of the riparian corridor, managing for wildlife and habitat, and preserving and interpreting the historical significance of the property. Upon acquisition, the property will remain closed to the public until resource assessment and management recommendations are developed during OSMP's property integration process. During this time, OSMP staff will more closely evaluate the resource management and infrastructure needs of the farm. It is anticipated in the interim, and where possible, the property will be leased to the existing residential tenants and the current ranch manager, who is an existing agricultural tenant on other OSMP lands as well. For additional consideration tonight is the potential future disposal of a portion of this property. The headquarters area of the farm, known as Block 5 of the farm in Boulder Valley NUPUD, includes two residences and an agricultural tenant unit. The Block 5 parcel is permitted to be subdivided once, and because OSMP may determine through its property integration process that ownership of all of Block 5 is not needed to achieve its goals and purposes at Boulder Valley Farm, staff is requesting the authority to subdivide and dispose of a portion of Block 5 consistent with Section 177 of the Charter if determined to be appropriate during property integration. Questions?
Do we have questions? We want to start with... I guess one observation I have is the way that we've written this motion, and maybe we'll get to this in a minute, would we want it separated out so the motion doesn't include the disposal? And it would be a separate part? Okay.
Yeah.
Because it seems like it's just kind of there together in the motion, so I'd like it to be a separate.
Okay.
Any other questions we want to do public? Anybody want to speak? This is the most fantastic property that I, I mean, I got, I'm sorry, I'm in a wax philosophical way. 30 years ago.
Can I show all the pictures again?
Yeah. 30 years ago, when I worked on the... 30 years ago, when I worked on their old property, you know, I'd go over to Boulder Valley Farm and I'd think, gosh, it would be so fabulous, this property, but looking at the, just the conditions of all the ponds, they're just unbelievable, they're just pristine, and this property is just so exciting to think about that we would own this, so my congratulations to you for doing this. No one wants to speak? Jump up and down. Say yes.
A few things. First, as I've mentioned, I need to disclose this, I've mentioned this a few times over the years, I do some legal work for Union Pacific Railroad, nothing even remotely connected to any of the issues here, but since we're not buying their property and since it's not even an active piece of railroad track, I think I'm okay disputing in this discussion, but just wanted to fully disclose that. I also want to say, in general, I am more skeptical of purchases east of 95th, but this is a very large exception to that. And I just would want to be clear that, you know, I at least personally don't view this as sort of opening the door to just sort of generally buying farmland east of 95th. It's much more of a case-by-case thing because some of that is, you know, as I say, is sort of getting pretty far afield in terms of open space values, but this one, for all sorts of reasons that you've discussed, is a very big exception to that. And it also just comment that I think the price is particularly attractive. We talked about the math a little bit on the field visit, that, you know, when you look at what we've already spent for the conservation easements and subtract out things like some of the physical infrastructure, it's on the order of about $10,000 or $11,000 an acre, which is actually a very attractive price for what we're getting, which, I mean, we almost never get property at 10 to 11 K per acre these days. So, you know, it's wonderful from that perspective as well.
I wish I could have been on the field trip for this, like, being away in Maryland for the week for work was, I missed all the fun. This looks fabulous. I think this is one of those, you know, times where it's like, wow, this is a real big win. It's not a small piece of land, it's a big, big hunk that could make a huge difference. And being on Boulder Creek, I think, is just super valuable, so I think this was a big win. I would kind of, what you talked about Molly at the very beginning, I kind of echo that I like the idea of there's a movement, emotion, sorry, not a movement, to acquire something, and anything else that has to do with what goes on on that property remain a second motion. We had discussed that before when we talked about H C As, and I just think in general it's good to just say, here we're going to buy it, here's a second motion, what we're going to do with it. I think it's fine to have them in the same night, but my preference would always be just give us two motions, or three, or however many you need to do. But this is great, wonderful job. I'm sure it must have been a hell of a negotiation.
I'll just add my enthusiasm, too. The number of opportunities that this land presents is almost mind-boggling. I start to think about putting together a management plan for this property, and it does make me dizzy, but many things were mentioned, and I'll just mention a couple others that sort of jump out at you. One is diversified agriculture. There's a small part of this property that would be a fabulous place for diversified agriculture, so, and there's probably more on that property, but all the infrastructure is in remarkably good condition and could be used in any number of ways for education or for, you know, continuing the ag livestock operations. There's also substantial horse facilities there, too, which I know will be of interest to people, so it's stunning, and I will just echo Kevin's congratulations for all the work you guys did. It's amazing.
If I could just put a little plug in for staff, Bethany Collins, Dan Burke, once again really brought it. So this is another project or deal that almost didn't happen, and there were a couple of times where there were off-ramps that we thought it wasn't gonna, we weren't going to be able to get back on again, and they stayed with it, and with their creativity and relationship building and so on, really brought it home, so appreciate them. And again, working with the city attorney's staff.
Totally awesome. Real quick, I'm sure staff had a very good reason for combining the acquisition with the clause on potential future disposal, so I just wanted to give staff an opportunity to speak to that before we went ahead and broke them into two separate motions.
One, I suppose the biggest reason really is, this is the board who has seen this property and who knows the purpose for which it's acquired in the first place, and so, and what that potential future and why we would or could potentially subdivide and dispose of a portion, rather than having to go back and, you know, in five years or something once a property integration and once it's kind of looked at, and it's a different membership, and really have to go back and revisit a lot of this and have to re-educate. You know, again, you guys have been out there, you've seen, you know, what staff was thinking at the time and why we are proposing this, and, you know, what that would, how that would or would not impact the purpose for which we're acquiring the property.
And as long as we move forward with a second separate motion approving future potential disposal, that connection of this board's relationship with the property and our sense of, at the time of acquisition, we thought that this potential future disposal was reasonable, that would still be maintained.
Exactly, absolutely. Yes.
It's fine to have two motions.
Yeah, it's absolutely fine. They were probably linked because they were linked in the staff recommendation and things, so, yeah, no problem.
Tom, do you want to work your magic on?
On editing?
Editing and.
Split the one and do the two.
So I'll move that the open space Board of Trustees recommend that the Boulder City Council approve the purchase of approximately 615 acres of land, associated residences and agricultural buildings, outbuildings, and a pertinent mineral and water rights from Boulder Valley Farm, Inc., for $9.5 million for open space and mountain parks purposes.
I mean, you can.
It was Kurt.
I did this, I did.
Second?
Yeah.
I would have, but you beat me.
We both.
Then do we, what about?
I think we should.
Okay, all in favor? Then would we say we recognize the potential future disposal? What's the proper?
Well, can I just speak to this?
Sure.
I don't know if we've done this before, so, and I confess I haven't thought a great deal about it, but usually a disposal is a very, you know, we take those as one of our, you know, most serious matters, and usually it's in the context of a fairly specific proposal of what we're selling, who we're selling it to, what kind of restrictions, if any, are imposed on it, what the sale price is, kind of how that factors into the overall property, and whether we think that's a good or a bad idea. And I'm, I would just, I don't know that I'm opposed to it, but I'm at least concerned, and I totally take your point, that there is an efficiency that we, four of us have been there, and we kind of have it in our minds. On the other hand, we don't have a very specific target here on, you know, I think it's fine to say, sure, if there's the right buyer at the right price and it makes sense in terms of the overall program, it would make sense to proceed to, you know, put a deal together and bring it to us, and you might, you know, at least from my perspective, take that as a direction in approval from our perspective regardless, but I guess I have at least a concern about whether we should be voting for a disposal that's pretty hypothetical at this point. I mean, you know, even when it came to just a few feet on the buffer side of the Greenways Trail, we didn't want that, we're pretty, you know, we're pretty tough on disposals.
Well, my, sorry to.
No, no, I'm done.
Yeah, my read of this is that this board is, should be saying, and we can rewrite this accordingly, is that we understand that there may be a future need during the integration phase, but we're by no means rubber stamping, like, oh, yeah, sell it to whoever you want. Like, it's still going to come to us for a normal disposal.
That's the question you're raising.
I think that may be different, because this was originally noticed with, you know, as an actual formal notice of disposal, so.
And we have done this before with the Coleman property. We, the board, at the same time that it purchased, it gave the potential, it authorized disposal if that came to pass, and it's just that, and maybe Bethany could speak to this a little bit more, that this one small piece may not really serve all of the purposes that we see such great value, and it's a piece that doesn't necessarily fall into the integration of the whole site, and so allowing us the flexibility, and we could always come back and provide information and analysis about why we would pursue it.
I think, I mean, I think I hear Tom's point really clearly, on the other hand, I think I hear your points really well as well, like, it's been really hard for me when I've come into the board and seeing things that came up, and there was a discussion, say, with Joder Ranch, like, part of what happened with Joder Ranch's original purchase was, well, we envisioned some recreational use, and then we had to go through a whole bunch of discussion all over again about whether that was part of the vision or not because that wasn't quite explicitly stated. In this case, if you don't put this in here, not that, I mean, it may never be a problem, but future board that finally decides on disposal might be helped by having us have a formal statement of, we recognize that this is part of the potential intent when this was acquired, because then that way they'll have a record of our board saying, yeah, we get it, like, this might be a part that could be calved off, that wouldn't negatively impact this. I don't know how to word that.
And if you don't want to dispose of it, that's okay, too. We can always bring it back to a future board if we'd like to.
And to provide a little further clarification, and yes, just what Tracy said, if you guys don't want to, it doesn't make or break any part of this, so, the, we do dispose of property, you know, and Coleman is a great example, fair market value with appropriate restrictions based on, based on what the future, you know, what's surrounding, what the property is that is being disposed of. And so that would, you know, to maybe clarify some of that. The other thing, you know, as you guys have seen in how the Block 5 is structured, there are very few scenarios that make sense for kind of subdividing it, and again, the purpose for subdivision really would, from a program impact perspective, be that, you know, we might not need all of those, all of the residences to contribute to the agricultural operation and the future management of this property, and it would make sense to subdivide and sell one of those residences. And again, you know, kind of from a structure of that block point of view, there's, you know, it's kind of restricted of keeping an ag, you know, headquarters area together versus subdividing off a residence, and so there's not that many scenarios under which that could happen, or sizes or anything, so if you're asking, you know, what size would the property be, what would it include, you know, it's kind of the residents and the nearby outbuildings, or, and/or, you know, separate from the agricultural, the farm compound, you know, but that clarification aside, you don't, you don't have to do this, and we're not necessarily married to this concept. It's been, you know, in talking with staff and in this and other properties, it really is, you know, it comes up a lot, well, what if we don't need the house, we just want the land, or what if we don't, and so we're trying to include this potential flexibility in that integration process, and again, asking the same board that approves the acquisition understanding why we acquired it in the first place.
I guess the question I would have for you guys to think about, I think it'd be easy to get us to pass a second motion saying the board recognizes that there may be a need in the future to do blah, 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 but I don't know if that helps you any. If it does, I think it would be easy, but if what you really need for us to do is to approve a disposal, which is, I think, the high bar that Tom has identified, I guess we should know that, that that's what you need us to do, that or nothing, I guess. What's your, what's your thinking?
Tonight, we were asking for authorizing the disposal.
Right, and anything less?
It's probably just a statement that we could include in, within the board minutes and the recommendation to, regarding this property in the future.
Well, I guess I would kind of mirror what Tom's saying in that, you know, given, I guess I didn't read that this was a definite, given that we don't know what we're going to even do with management on the property, and we haven't really fully vetted the property, I feel a little uncomfortable to go ahead and dispose it if we don't have to.
Sure.
And if it's not contingent or affects adversely, has a mine on it or something, you know, so I would probably feel the same way as Tom about that.
So delete the last part.
Yeah, delete the last.
Yep.
That's fine. Totally fine.
But I think you do take, and I, but I'll see if anyone disagrees, I think you do take that we support your exploring disposals.
Correct.
And, you know.
And that would be noted, that, you know, it was considered, when the acquisition was considered, this was discussed, and there was support for that potential.
And I agree with Kurt's statement that if we could have this reflected in the minutes, even though it's not a motion, I'd appreciate that, because then there's a written record for future boards.
Definitely.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thanks. And so Bethany, you're not part of the next puzzle piece?
She may be.
Yes.
Okay. Dan Burke is, Dan Burke is up next on the Culver Conservation Easement Amendment.
Yes. Good evening again. Dan Burke, Real Estate Services Supervisor, and we're going to keep our attention on Boulder Valley Farm. It's the night of Boulder Valley Farm. As you can imagine, with a property this large, with this history, there's a number of due diligence items that needs to be resolved prior to closing. One of those items that we're trying to resolve before acquisition is a water pipeline easement that was placed and executed on the property over a year ago, and I will walk you through, in your memo, I think it describes it well, but I will walk you through the salient points of what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish. In May of 2016, owners of the Boulder Valley Farm granted a water pipeline easement in favor of the Farm and Boulder Valley Homeowners Association. This water pipeline easement was one of several issues addressed in a settlement agreement between Boulder Valley Farm and the Homeowners Association. The settlement agreement was executed to resolve issues and disputes concerning the relationship between Boulder Valley Farm and the association. About 200 feet of this water pipeline easement crosses over land that is encumbered by the Culver Conservation Easement that O S M P is responsible for overseeing. While the Culver Conservation Easement does not prohibit Boulder Valley Farm from granting easements over land subject to the Culver Conservation Easement, the Conservation Easement does stipulate that the city shall approve of any easements prior to their execution. In this case, O S M P was not informed and did not provide the necessary approval prior to the Boulder Valley Farm granting the pipeline easement. Because the water pipeline easement has already been executed, recorded, and in place, and the conditions to the settlement agreement in which the water pipeline easement arose has been satisfied, the parties to the water pipeline easement will not voluntarily terminate the pipeline easement. However, the parties are willing to cooperatively work with city staff and attorneys, city attorneys, to replace the executed pipeline easement with a new water pipeline easement that has terms and conditions that the city demands and that better protects the Culver Conservation Easement property. New terms and conditions will decrease by half the width of the pipeline easement area, decrease by half the maximum size of the pipe diameter that would be allowed, contain restrictions on wind construction and maintenance activities can occur, and on the use, restrict the use of motorized vehicles on the easement parcel, demand that the best management practices are adhered to, and that a reclamation plan that the city has approved is in place, and also, and perhaps very importantly, under a new water pipeline easement, the city will be a party to the easement and will have legal standing to a. will be a party to the easement and will have legal standing to enforce its terms. City's Attorney's Office has been working very closely with OSMP staff and utility staff and is recommending that if OSMP grants approval of a new water pipeline easement, that the Culver Conservation Easement be amended to specifically permit the installation of a water pipeline and strict compliance with the terms of the new water pipeline easement. Therefore, OSMP staff is recommending... The mending recommends that we amend the Culver Conservation Easement to permit the installation of a water pipeline in accordance to a city-negotiated water pipeline easement pursuant to a settlement agreement between Boulder Valley Farm, Inc., and Boulder Family... Farm and Boulder Valley Homeowners Association. And with that, myself and Bethany will be happy to entertain any questions.
Dan, is the plan to... Or can you walk through the timing of this relative to the acquisition? Is the idea that these two documents would be executed sort of simultaneously, at the same time we do the acquisition? The easement is amended, or does...
The easement would be amended prior to its... prior to the purchase.
Okay. The reason I asked was, and you've solved the problem, but if you... If we owned the property and then amended an easement, that gets, you know, possibly back into disposal.
No, that would be disposal. And that's...
But you're doing it beforehand, and then you're buying the new thing. I don't think anyone could accuse us of having disposed of something.
And the second point there, Tom, is that if during any of the due diligence phases of the acquisition, that the acquisition falls by the wayside, that this is a separate action that would still... that would still occur, no matter the fate of the acquisition.
Yeah, you're right.
So therefore, they are two separate items. And a lot of this has been worked through in consultation with City Attorney's Office.
How did we find out that they were out of compliance? Because the CE was 1992. Was that just in due diligence that we found out, or...
It was executed in May of 2016, and we found out November of 2017... Or 2016, November of 2016. At the time, that we were in pretty well along in negotiations for the purchase. So we actually had to set the purchase negotiations aside in order to deal with this conservation easement issue. So it postponed our acquisition talks while we put attention and resources towards this. In the settlement agreement and in the water pipeline easement, it does mention that they need to get the approvals that they needed. It was an oversight on their part, to be quite frankly, to be quite frank. So we eventually were made aware of it, but several months after the execution of the easement.
Okay. Do we have the need public? Are we ready to move to a motion?
Can I ask... Sorry for the legalisms, but when we amend an easement, is that just an approval by us, or is that a recommendation that has to go to council?
It rests with this body.
Okay, so we can just flat-out amend?
And yes. And just for clarification, there is a definition of minor and major. And minor staff can actually carry out that. When... And sitting down with City Attorney's Office, we asked all those questions. We determined that this really should go before the board. But it doesn't need to go to council. I guess it's the second question part.
Should it say that we are going to approve amendment of...
Yes.
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 Okay. Approve amending or approve amendment of whatever.
Controversial easement.
And I think it's... There are two other minor changes before someone reads it. I mean, I think it's in accordance with... Maybe it's two. I would say in accordance with a city-negotiated water pipeline in line four, first word.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
And...
Isn't that line five?
Sorry, sorry.
Attorney, you know, numbers.
He knows words. He just can't count lines.
Change two to with.
And I think it's in the next-to-last line, "the farm." There's been... Some of the things say "farm," and some say "the farm," but I think it's "the farm."
Capital T.
Capital T.
I will move that the open space Board of Trustees... And then we need to get rid of the word "to" there. Approve amendment of the Culver Conservation Easement to permit the installation of a water pipeline in accordance with the city-negotiated water pipeline easement pursuant to a settlement agreement between Boulder Valley Farms, Inc., and "the farm" and Boulder Valley Homeowners Association.
I second. All in the paper.
So you saw quite a bit of the Cracker Jack real estate team that...
Yes, yes.
Dan Burke assembled...
CNN two years.
Somebody I haven't... I'm not sure you've met yet is Matt Ashley, who's relatively new to the team. So it's an impressive team. You'll see more work from them in the future. I also... Heidi Seidel is here, and she's working with Erica's group on visitation work that we have underway. So we have some great folks on board.
If we want to buy more land, do we have to start selling organs? I feel like we spent all day.
But we still have 14 million.
I know.
Yeah, I know. So you can save your kidneys for later.
All right. I'm sure that day's coming.
All right. With that, I think we are adjourned.
Record time. Wow.
It's half an hour.